Oh yeah, so that's Lishelle and Susanna, isn't it? Isn't that who just?
Yeah. So.
Oh, I think, okay, we started now, just FYI.
Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. Right of the United States of America. Into the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to thank everyone for coming out to tonight's hybrid city council chambers and Zoom webinar meeting. History is being made as we speak to make sure that we accommodate for the people who would like to have in-person meetings, as well as people who would like to participate in our meetings by Zoom. So the first item on our agenda is the roll call. Tonight, city council members, I ask that you will be patient because this is the first time us having to see how everything works. And there may be some echo, there may be some technical glitches or something may go wrong, just be patient. Some of you, I may see your hands raised and some of you I may not see your hands raised. So just be patient, I ask you that you do not try to talk over someone else tonight. Let them talk and then we'll recognize you, okay? If for some reason we lose any type of connections on the screen, just be patient. Our team, our IT staff, they're going to be working diligently to make sure we get everything back up and running, okay? All right, so tonight for the votes, Ms. Martinez is going to ask the people who are live here today to either raise your hand or speak into the mic, right? Is that what we're gonna do?
Yeah, we'll just do verbal roll calls.
Okay, verbal, okay, voting, okay, all right.
Okay, Counselor Broyles.
Here.
Counselor Hensley.
Here.
Mayor Coleman.
Here.
Counselor Vehill.
Here.
Counselor Carson.
Here.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
And Counselor Griego.
Present.
All counselors present and a quorum has been declared. And I do want to advise Council, you may want to turn your mics on when you talk because that's the sound system into the Zoom.
Okay, thank you, thank you all very much. Okay, up next, we have the agenda approval.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir, Counselor Carson.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Griego.
Yes.
Counselor Broyles.
Yes.
Counselor Hensley.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Vehill.
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have citizen comments. This is where we ask any citizens who would like to make any comments to come up to the podium and make your comments. We do ask that you state your name and we ask that you keep your comments to less than three minutes. If you are still talking, I will politely ask you to end your comments at that particular time. So this is one of those situations where we may have some people show up live who would like to come up to the podium or we may have people on the Zoom here who would like to make comments. So Ms. Martinez, will you please give those who are on Zoom instructions of how to raise their hand and be recognized? So we can give them an opportunity to speak. And if we have anyone in the audience who would like to participate, just raise your hand so we'll know.
Okay, if you're attending virtually, you will use your Zoom app and use the raise your hand feature if you'd like to speak. Or if you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine to use that feature.
Okay, so in the real live council chambers, I don't see anyone at the want to come up to the podium. Do you recognize anybody with their hand raised?
I do not, I do not see anybody raising their hand.
I have my hand raised.
What?
I have my hand raised. I have a question as a session.
Okay, what's your question?
From here, I can't see you, Mayor, but it sounds like you're not wearing a mask, are you?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I was just curious because I can't, I can't see you guys and I, that's the reason I didn't attend because I thought we were going to be mandated to wear masks. So I just wanted to see if everybody was wearing masks.
Thank you, I'm, thank you, Counselor Carson, but yes, we're wearing masks and it sounds like we have some good microphones up here if it doesn't sound like it, so that's good. All right, so we'll go ahead and we'll move on.
Everybody is wearing masks, not just Council, like everyone in the chambers in City Hall?
Yes, everybody that I can see.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, so since we don't have any comments, we're going to go ahead and close this segment of the agenda and we're going to go down to ceremonial items. Tonight, we have at least four different proclamations that we're going to read. And just for those of you who are not familiar with our process, usually what we do is we spread the proclamations around so all of the council members throughout the year get a chance to participate in reading the proclamations, especially if they serve on some of the committees. So the first proclamation that we have tonight is the Mental Health Month proclamation. And tonight, Counselor Daniel is going to read that proclamation from Zoom. Do we have anyone here present in the audience?
So not physically, Mayor, we do have some representatives from the San Luis Valley Behavioral Health Group, as well as Valleywide Health Systems, who are here to answer any of Council's questions, as well as help celebrate this month for us.
Okay, and they are in, on the Zoom right now.
They are.
Okay, good deal.
So would you like me to start with the proclamation?
Sure, if you could read the proclamation and then if you would like to make a comment, we'll go ahead and acknowledge that, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so this is for May is Mental Health Month 2021 and it's all about tools to thrive. So whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans face challenges in life that can impact their mental health, especially during a pandemic, and whereas prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and whereas there are practical tools that all people can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention and treatment efforts. Therefore, Ty Coleman, the mayor of the city of Alamosa and the rest of city council, along with Valleywide Health Systems and the San Luis Valley Behavioral Health Group proclaim May 2021 as Mental Health Month. I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to commit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, thank you so very much for Counselor Daniel for reading that proclamation, we appreciate that. Okay, so do we have any representatives who like to make any, say a few words, the ones who are on Zoom here tonight?
So Marsha or Bonnie, would you like, I know this one's weird because we're in the Zoom land and in-person land, so I can see you two very clearly, would either of you like to say anything from the Behavioral Health Group?
Hi, I'm Bonnie Ortega and I'm one of the senior clinical supervisors at San Luis Valley Behavioral Health Group. We just want to appreciate that we got the opportunity to attend with you tonight and appreciate that the proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month, recognizing how important it is that we have honest and open communication about mental health and the opportunities that everyone has to, you know, find services, be able to come to behavioral health or wherever they feel that they would like to get support for their overall health and well-being. And if anybody has any questions about how to do that, that they know how to reach out or how to get in contact with any of us to get those services started.
And so I'm Marsha Candy, I'm the other senior clinical supervisor here. And so the other thing we really like people to know is, especially during this challenging time, that we are, our doors are open, we have continued services. We did, we're currently doing more of a hybrid model, where we are doing some telehealth as well as some in-person for those that need it. We have continued services through all of this time and we will continue. So if people don't feel comfortable coming into the office, they can definitely do telehealth in any of our outline offices or here in Alamosa, and if they feel the need that they would really benefit more from coming in in person, they can definitely do that. So just as Bonnie said, that they can contact us if they need, have any questions about getting enrolled in services or some of the different services that we provide.
Okay, well, we thank you all so very much. Do we have any questions or comments from Council? I don't, I don't see any other hands raised or anything like that. Counselor Daniel, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, so we also have representatives from Valleywide here, Valerie Engel and Donald Romero, if they could say just a few words about what they think about Mental Health Month, if that would be okay?
Yeah, sure.
Hi, can you hear me okay with a mask?
If you could talk into the mic, that'd be great.
To this group, I just would like to make mental health services a little bit more accessible for people. And I believe that everybody has had a pretty rough year with 2020 and we're in the process of all healing and it's an awesome privilege to work for a company that makes it available for all people. Our clinic is currently open from eight to eight now, Monday through Thursday. Yep, and we're currently working with children, teens, adults, and the elderly. I'm glad people are reaching out to get help and I'm hoping that the stigma for reaching for help is reduced because the services are needed and the services are also available for all people in the county, in the area, I would say. Take away, don't.
So just to piggyback off that, I mean, there's great services available here at Valleywide, at San Luis Valley Behavioral Health. If you ever feel that anybody has the need to reach out, seek some counseling, you know, there's two great places to go. There's other places that you can go. On top of that, there's a statewide crisis line, the number is 1-844-493-8255. So there's always some kind of help available, SLB Behavioral Health, Valleywide, SLB Health House and Counselors, there's some private counselors, and there's also the statewide crisis line, so, you know.
Okay.
All those services and make sure we, you know, get in the community.
Thank you all so very much for sharing those comments with us. I am going to turn it over to Council, it looks like Counselor Griego has his hand raised.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, it's, it's, mental health is so important, especially to veterans and I just want to acknowledge Mr. Romero, he was with the VA and we're sad to see him go and what he's done for a lot of veterans with PTSD is remarkable. And I still talk to a lot of those guys and they miss him because his, his work there really was tremendous. So but I think it's very, very important, this, you know, the mental health and I'm glad that Counselor Daniels read this proclamation and that's all, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Griego. Okay, it looks like Counselor Carson has his hand raised.
I'd also like to echo what Counselor Griego said. Thank you, Counselor Daniels, for all you do for the community in that realm and aspect. And thank you guys, Bonnie and Marsha and Donald and Valerie for showing up here and giving us a presentation tonight. You guys are right, this year with COVID and coming into 2021 and some of the stressors there, everybody needs these services a lot more now, I think, than we ever have probably in maybe, you know, maybe the history of our country now, I mean, it's been pretty rough. I think people have access to a lot more information, much more quickly than we did back in the day, like they say. And I think the access to that information can sometimes be a huge stressor on people, having all that thrown out at one time. So thank you guys for being here and thank you for the services you do for the community and being able to be onsite as well. Some of the mobile services that, that all these groups are doing now is pretty amazing. You know, in the, the respect of also putting out the, the fact that all these services are also providing rides and transportation for a lot of their clients and the hybrid model has made it huge for a lot of these people that they're reaching out to. So again, thank you guys for everything you guys are doing for the community, really, really, it's really crucial right now.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Carson. Okay, I don't see any lights on or hands raised here, so I'll just wrap things up. I appreciate you reading the proclamation, Counselor Daniel, and I thank you also very much for giving the community the helpful information and providing a wonderful service, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that brings us to the next proclamation. Under our ceremonial items, we have the Historic Preservation Month. And tonight, we've asked Counselor Vehill to read that proclamation because he's on that board as well. Counselor Vehill, I'm not for sure if we have anyone participating from that.
She should be here in person, Andrea Bachmann.
She's here.
Oh, she's here, okay, all right, good, I'm sorry, I can barely see back that far. So if you want to just come up to the podium right here, that'd be great. So you can take your mask off and speak if you like.
Okay.
Okay, oh, both of you together, okay, all right, good, good. I'm looking, I tell you, I'm trying to push buttons and move things, we're good. All right, so I'll let you all make a few comments and then we'll have Counselor Vehill read the proclamation and then we'll step down and take a picture with you all and, okay, all right, good.
Well, I think I would say that it's hard to find a group of more dedicated board members in the city than the Historic Preservation Board. They're so passionate, very knowledgeable and, and really, they have a lot of history that they're able to offer that otherwise isn't, you know, maybe celebrated or could be lost, so certainly want to give that shout out.
Thank you, thank you, Deacon, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, and yeah, my name's Andrea Bachmann and I'm the Chair of HPAK. I appreciate you having me here this evening and having me here to help celebrate the Historic Preservation Month. I am the newest member of HPAK, so I feel like there's probably other people here who could speak better to our celebration tonight. But I did some recent research on Historic Preservation Month and it wasn't until 2005 that they actually dedicated a whole month to Historic Preservation, so that's pretty cool. But I think it's just an awesome thing to celebrate as a town here. We have some great old buildings and not only for our community to appreciate, but also people coming in for tourism in the valley and things like that. So I appreciate you recognizing it.
Thank you, Andrea, thank you, Andrea, for being here and thank you, Deacon. May 2021 Historic Preservation Month, whereas the city of Alamosa in celebration of the month of May as Archaeology and Historic Preservation Month, recognizes that historic sites and structures in the community are symbols of our heritage and valuable assets to the quality of life in our community. These structures anchor our downtown, our residential areas, and the larger community, upholding the native character of our city and instilling civic pride by virtue of their very presence. Their potential as resources and attractors for heritage tourism is great. The events, businesses, and experiences these sites have hosted connect us to one another and form a vital part of the fabric of our community. And whereas Alamosa's many historic structures represent a diversity of economic and architectural trends that are integral to the past and future development of this great community founded more than 142 years ago, the city is actively engaged in recognizing these emblems of our heritage through the Alamosa Historic Registry. Now, therefore, the City of Alamosa City Council proclaims that the month of May 2021 as Historic Preservation Month and encourages its citizens to advance historic preservation activities in the community. Thank you. Thank you, great job, Counselor Vehill. Okay, Counselor Hensley?
I just wanted to say that you do have a phenomenal group and we actually were very lucky, Pat came by today and we actually talked to him and he is just a plethora of information and that energy and the research he does. And honestly, him sitting with us for five to 10 minutes, I learned a lot. And so thanks for all you, you do and that energy and excitement and that, that need and want to do that research. So, and sharing it with all of us, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised, so once again, it's, the work that you all do is so important to our community because it recognized the history and, and the buildings that, like Counselor Vehill was saying earlier in a meeting, that it would hopefully in the future have people want to come to our community just to see the historic building. So thank you for all the work you do. So we're going to go down here and have Counselor Vehill present you with this proclamation. I don't see any hands raised, we'll go ahead and do that. All right, feels good to have human interaction again. All right, okay, that brings us to the next proclamation tonight, the Municipal Clerks Week proclamation. I know we have our team here, so if you all want to come up to the podium, just in case Council would like to ask you some questions or if you would like to make some comments, and then we're going to have Counselor Griego read this proclamation tonight via Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor, it's an honor to, it's an honor you chose me to read this proclamation. The hard work that Holly Martinez, Susana Gallegos, and Luciana Montano do for the city is tremendous. This is a 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest amongst public servants, and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful for their neutrality and impartiality rendered equally service to all, and whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on the functions of local government and community, and whereas professional municipal clerks continue to strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk through participating in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, provincial, provincial, and county and international professional organization. And whereas it's most appropriate that we recognize the compliment of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now, therefore, I, Ty Coleman, mayor of the city of Alamosa, and on behalf of the entire council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd through May 8th, 2008, as Professional Municipal Clerk Week. And further extend appreciation again to our Professional Municipal Clerks, Holly Martinez, Susana Gallegos, and Luciano Montano. through the Alamosa Historic Registry. Now therefore, the City of Alamosa City Council proclaims that the month of May 2021 as Historic Preservation Month and encourages its citizens to advance historic preservation activities in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job, Counselor V Hill. Okay, uh, Counselor Hensley?
I just wanted to say that you do have a phenomenal group and we actually were very lucky Pat came by today and we actually talked to him and he is just a plethora of information and that energy and the research he does. And honestly, him sitting with us for five to 10 minutes, I learned a lot. And so thanks for all you you do and that energy and excitement and that need that need and want to do that research. So and sharing it with all of us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I don't see any other hands raised, so once again, it's the work that you all do is so important to our community because it it recognized the history uh and and the buildings that like Counselor V Hill was saying earlier in a meeting that it would hopefully in the future have people want to come to our community just to see the historic buildings. So thank you for all the work you do. So we're gonna go down here and have Counselor V Hill present you with this proclamation. I don't see any hands raised. We'll go ahead and do that. All right, feels good to have human interaction again. All righty. Okay, that brings us to the next proclamation uh tonight, um, the Municipal Clerks Week Proclamation. Um, I know we have our team here, so if you all want to come up to the podium just in case Counselor like to ask you some questions or if you would like to make some comments. And then we're gonna have Counselor Griege go read this proclamation tonight uh via Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor to it's an honor you chose me to read this proclamation. The hard work that Holly Martinez, Susana Gallegos, and Luciana um Montano do for the city is tremendous. Uh, this is a 52nd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world and whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest amongst public servants. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful for their neutrality and impartiality rendered equally service to all. And whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on the functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerk clerks continue to strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk through participating in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state provincial, provincial and county and international professional organization. And whereas it's most appropriate that we recognize the compliment of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I Ty Coleman, Mayor of the City of Alamosa, and on behalf of the entire council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd through May 8th 2008 as Professional Municipal Clerk Week. And further extend appreciation again to our Professional Municipal Clerks, Holly Martinez, Susana Gallegos, and Lucille Montano. And to all the Professional Municipal Clerks for their vile service they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they represent. Given under my hand, the sealed City of Alamosa, Colorado on Cinco de Mayo Day 2021.
Thank you so very much, Counsel Griege, for reading that proclamation. We we have them at the podium. Um, and I am going to allow to Ms. Ms. Martinez and her team to say a few words if you like, and then Counsel may have some additional comments for you.
Well, I don't have much to say. Just thank you for the proclamation. I couldn't, you know, run this office without my great team, so it's we are a great team just because of how we work together. I appreciate them very much.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Michelle and Susanna, any comments?
I don't have anything to say. Thank you.
Thank you for the proclamation and and I thoroughly enjoy helping our citizens of Alamosa and hopefully we can do it for quite some time.
Okay, thank you. Don't leave yet because we have the mic lights lit and we have hands raised and I don't know who was first, so we're gonna go in the order in which I feel is right for now. And we're gonna go with uh Counselor Carson, followed by Counselor Daniel. That's Zoom, and then we'll go with Counselor Brawls, followed by Counselor V Hill, okay? All right, Counselor Carson, you're up.
Uh, I just wanted to say thank you um to all our municipal clerks uh in Alamosa. They are great. They keep the city rocking and rolling uh and city hall is a pretty busy place. I'm sure it even it's even that way now with COVID. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you, guys. It's I know it's been rough the last year and adapting to all this new uh kind of hybrid work. Um, so thank you guys very much and uh my significant other is also a clerk, so I wanted to say thank you to her as well.
Thank you, Counsel Carson. Okay, Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to say we have a terrific team in the City Clerk's Office and it is fantastic to see such a strong group of leaders and female leaders taking a strong role in our community. And so really want to say thank you to to you all and for all the work you've done, all of the structure you've put in and all of the things that are happening. So thank you for your work and thank you for always being pleasant when I come in like in a blur um and you help me find what I'm looking for. Uh, and so I really uh really appreciate the work that you do and in the manner in which you do it. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Brawls, followed by Counselor V Hill.
Might as well say I'm I'm impressed with the number of records that you maintain and keep accurate and all the hard work. I was in here the other day and you was doing the municipal court and I was impressed with how well you do that, how how smooth that is because because of the clerks. But you know, Holly and all the whole staff here, you do a great job and we appreciate your service. So I just want to say thank you.
Okay, uh, Counselor V Hill, followed by Counselor Hensley?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to echo everybody else said, thank you for putting such together a great team. I really appreciate how you all are cross-trained on different aspects of the job, so if something happens, you guys can just pick up that slack, so keep up the great work and it's been tough through COVID, but we just really appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor V Hill. Counselor Hensley?
So when you're the last one who says anything, it's kind of the same as everybody else. But I wanted to make sure that you realize I also feel the same as what everybody else has said. And since uh Counselor V Hill said echo, I'll say ditto. And so ditto to everything, but thank you very much. And one of the things that I think makes you so strong is the fact that you do all work so well together. And that is stronger than the three of you each working separately. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I'll I'll just wrap things up and then we'll come down there and present the proclamation to you, okay? I want to thank you all for, in addition to everything else, making the office more effective and efficient. We really noticed that improvement, so thank you so very much for that as well. Okay, so now we're gonna go down and we'll do the picture thing. All righty. Okay, Counsel, thank you so very much. That brings us to um the next proclamation. Um, on the agenda, Police Week Proclamation. Uh, we have Chief Anderson. If you would like to come up to the podium. So Chief, Chief, if you like, you could you can make any comments or and and then um I'll read the proclamation and then we'll come down and present it to you, okay?
Okay, sounds great.
Thank you.
Um, you know what? If you don't mind reading it first, then I'll kind of comment on that afterwards.
Sure, it's no problem. Okay. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May the 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement and Alamosa Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Alamosa. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the City of Alamosa Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which with unceasingly provides a vital public service. And whereas I, City of Alamosa Mayor Ty Coleman, call upon all citizens of Alamosa and upon all patriarch civil civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May the 10th, 2021 as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all of the people may join in ceremony uh celebrating the police officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves and and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Alamosa to observe Friday, May the 15th, 2021 as Peace Officer Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who through their uh courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled uh in the performance of their duty. Therefore, I Ty Coleman, by the virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Alamosa, do hereby honor law enforcement officers across the country and the Alamosa Police Department and proudly proclaim the week, May the 10th, 2021 as Police Week and May 15th, 2021 as Peace Officer Memorial Day. Thank you. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, it's good to see you guys in person. For the rest of you on Zoom, good to see you as well. Um, number one, thank you for this opportunity to once again come up here and talk to you all. The challenges faced by agency heads and departments to honorably recognize officers who have died in the line of duty and care for their families and department personnel are daunting. Next week is Police Week and we greatly appreciate all the support to honor our fallen brothers and sisters who have paid the ultimate sacrifice keeping our community safe. So next week, we're gonna have the ceremony, so I guess I'm inviting everybody, okay? I'd I'd love to see you all. Um, I'm gonna be participating clearly. Um, that will be the 12th of May at 5:30 PM. That's Wednesday, next Wednesday. We'd sure like to see everybody there if you can make it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. We may have, we have some council members who would like to make some comments, so this time we're gonna do the reverse. We're gonna do the live council members first. Uh, we have Counselor Hensley, um, Counselor uh V Hill, and then Counsel Brawls, and then we'll go to the Zoom council members. Okay, go ahead.
Well, Chief, I want to say that you and your crew, you make um, you are send a good light and you represent Alamosa very well. And I know this has been a super tough year, um, just with so many different angles and obviously I don't have to repeat all the different things that have gone on. But you and your team have just come out super strong, super positive, optimistic, and that idea of really being there for our community members and all the things you've done. And I just want you to know, I truly, truly appreciate what you do for our community and what your whole staff does as well.
We all appreciate you as well. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel V Hill, followed by Counsel Brawls?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, Chief, you and your staff and all your guys and gals, I let you just get after it and it's been such a hard year. And when a lot of people are leaving the profession and don't want to become police officers anymore. You and your group do it the right way and you serve people and I just really appreciate that. You keep us safe, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel V Hill. Counselor Brawls?
No, I'd most like to say that every week got to be proclamation week for the police. I mean, uh, I I think we cannot go one week without, you know, good law enforcement and the police officers, and I appreciate the police officers in Alamosa. And you know, we certainly support you and this day and age, it's just it's just vital to have a good police and professional force and I hear good things about you all the time, so. And you're, you know, you're and your people and your officers and so I just want to say thank you and uh, you know, the proclamation is well, well regarded, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Brawls. Okay, um, Zoom Council, uh, we're gonna go in this order. Um, Counselor Daniel, Counselor Griege, and then Counsel Carson. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Chief, thank you so much for the work that you and your team does. There's no doubt um, that the challenges this year have been unprecedented in so many ways. And so for all of you who put on the uniform every day and continue to serve and create safe spaces for people, thank you. With the work you've done with Lead, thank you. Um, I also would be remiss if I said I don't think it's a uh, a coincidence that Mental Health Month and Police Week fall in the same month. So I hope you all are taking care of yourselves and doing the things you need to do in order to stay strong, stay healthy and be able to show up the way we know you show up all the time. So um just thank you for the work you do. It's so very much appreciated.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Daniel. Counsel Griege, followed by Counsel Carson?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I've had the opportunity for the past 38 years to work with the Alamosa Police Department and the work that Chief Anderson and his officers are doing is tremendous and the training that he provides for his officers not only keep them safe, but keeps our communities safe and the unrest that's going on with police departments throughout the the United States to see the professionalism that we have here. And I'm sure that we we're all human, we make some mistakes too, but you can see it and the people talk about how talk about our police department. And uh, especially now how we've been going out there and putting the bad guys in jail, especially the ones that are selling the drugs and stuff and I, you don't know how how many people have approached me and told me the great job that you guys are doing. So Chief, you're doing a tremendous job with the all of your officers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Griege. Counsel Carson?
Uh, Chief, you know, not to be a killjoy, but the reality is is it seems to me some days that we're just living in like an upside down world. It is so insane some days and and some of the things that our our little valley has gone through and seen have been just, you know, rough and crazy and and the way you guys handle yourselves and and the the professionalism that you guys show on a constant level daily is is amazing. I think you guys are a great example for PDs all over and um appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Carson. And Chief, I'll just wrap things up to let you know how much uh, not only myself, but uh my family and the entire team, the whole city really supports our Alamosa Police Department. And we see those extra things that you all do behind the scenes that a lot of people don't get a chance to see. Uh, and we see the extra attention to detail that you go through to try to make sure that you meet and you listen and you uh try to follow through and follow up with the concerns that are presented to you. So thank you for those little things because they all make a big difference.
We couldn't do it without strong leadership and the council that supports us, so we appreciate everything you guys do. Thanks.
Thank you. So we'll come down and present this to you, okay? All right. Good deal. All right. So now we're moving on down the agenda. Everything's working well. Our team, IT team, good job. We're moving right along. Good job. All right, up next, we have Consent Calendar A.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Martinez, will you take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Brawls?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Griege?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome. Okay, great. That brings us down to the next item on the agenda. We have the um presentation from uh two outside agencies. Uh, the first one is uh outside funding report for the Veteran Services. And I believe we have a representative, uh, Myra, um, if you would like to come up here to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. I know that I'm supposed to report on the fun, however, you know, I'm a new VSO with the turnover that we have for the current VSO. And obviously COVID-19 was a little difficult. However, we have resumed our services again to the community. As of April 5th, our transportation is back up and running in uh, for the month of April, we had about maybe 42 transportations to Pueblo, Denver Springs and around the area. And we're working to let the veterans know that I am a full-time VSO. I'm Monday to Friday from 8 to 4. So we're working to let everybody know to come in and we can help them out. Right now, most are picking up for Mineral County, you know, since the current VSO currently passed away because of COVID, so.
Okay, thank you so very much. Um, I'm gonna, before you leave, I just want to make sure that um, if we have anyone who has any comments that they get a chance to make some. I don't see any hands raised in the Zoom. I don't see any hands raised here, so thank you so very much for the presentation. We appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, the next item, we have a presentation from uh Lead uh Update. And um, we have the chief walking up to the podium. Ms. Martinez, do we have any attendees from Lead?
We do. They're all attending by Zoom, so give me a second to let them all in.
Okay, good.
Let me know if I missed anybody, but I think I got everybody.
Get everybody.
I think we might be missing Mario. Is Mario on? I think we might be missing Mario. Is Mario on?
He's in the attendee list. He just wasn't. I didn't know he was here for you guys. Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, and Scott. And Scott. Yeah. Jonathan won't be here.
No. I, okay. Make sure there's not a Jonathan. I think I was texting him. He might try.
Oh, did he?
And Clarissa, this is Heather. You may want to speak up when you, when you do start talking into the microphone more. Thank you.
Okay. Did you hear about looking for Jonathan in there?
Who did you say?
See if there's a Jonathan Wolford in the waiting room also. He may have made it.
Um, I don't see that name. I have a call-in phone number. I don't know if that's them. If, if you are here for the Lead Update, would you just raise your hand and I'll let you in? It's star nine if you're on the telephone to raise your hand. I don't think so. Think you're good to go.
So I think that's everyone. If, if you guys want to start.
Okay, I put together a presentation. I don't know if we want to, can I share it? My screen?
Sure, that would be great. Do you have the share option?
I do. Yes, I'll put it up. Let me know when you can see it.
We can see it.
Perfect. All right. Well, hello, everyone. Sorry, we had to all be here via Zoom. We were hoping we could come in, but it's nice to see everyone and be here tonight to give our presentation and update for City Council. So we've had a lot of exciting things happening with our team. So I wanted to start off with an introduction. We've been able to expand and hire some new case managers. So we've asked all of our team to come so they can introduce themselves. So you guys can see who our team is. And when you see them out in the community and tell them what a good job they're doing. And so we've got a pretty amazing team tonight. So I'm gonna go around. And as I see you guys on my screen, I'm just gonna ask you guys to say who you are and what part of the community you guys are helping out in. Clarissa, you're first on my screen.
Larissa Woodworth. I'm the Deputy Director at Center for Restorative Programs. And I get to support everybody. Lead is part of my job. And then I, I do other things.
I should probably introduce myself too, since there may be people on here who don't know who I am. So I'm Carrie Deacon, and I'm the Program Director, Center for Restorative Programs for our programs, our diversion programs at Center for Restorative Programs. Sorry, I said that multiple times. Holly?
My name is Holly Snow. I'm a Lead Case Manager, and I cover the Rio Grande area.
Hi, Holly. Gail?
Hi, everyone. I'm Gail Garcia Coons, and I am a intensive case management team lead. And I cover Canales, Alamosa area.
Thank you. Scott? Oh, we can't hear you, Scott.
Muted.
Yeah, okay. My name, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. My name's Scott Dillon. I serve as the Lead Liaison for the District Attorney's Office. I work with Lead and the DA's office cert, as a communication bridge and providing services to Lead that they don't have access to.
Thanks, Scott. Maya?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, my name is Mario Linares. I am new to the whole program. I am a Lead caseworker for CRP.
Okay. Ms. Camille?
My name is Camille Medina. I am new to the lead, to the program as well, and I am administrative support. And we also have Pancha Martinez. He's not able to join us tonight. He helps us with a lot of the Moda Vista Rio Grande area. And then also Jonathan Wolford, who just also recently joined our team. And he's also based in Alamosa. So as you can tell, we've really expanded and grown. All right. So we're gonna kind of jump in. I know last time when we presented, I got a lot of feedback that the slideshow was helpful. So I thought we'd just continue with that. So we're giving updates. Sorry, before I move on, I also wanted to acknowledge Chief Anderson, because I know you're there in person. And just wanted to make sure we acknowledge you as part of our team too. I know I can't see you because it's really small on my screen.
You're good. I appreciate it.
Yeah, okay. And at any point, Chief, if you want to jump in and say anything to you, just let me know.
Okay.
So as you can see here with our numbers, when we started running with the program with our referrals made 2018, these are our up-to-date totals with our referrals. So our total number of referrals is 142. And we've, we've broken them down so that way you can kind of see the difference between our diversion referrals with all of our departments, and then our social referrals. And as you can see, we've also added two new departments to our list of partners who we started working with. So Center PD and Del Norte PD have now joined our group and making referrals to our program. At the very bottom, you'll also notice we have a community referrals bullet right here. And we'll be talking a little bit about that layer in the presentation. And then I also wanted to note, to notice the SLV MAP program here. So we've been working with the SLV MAP collaboration in the valley. And we've been providing supports and case management services for people who are going in through the SLV MAP program. And so with that collaboration to date, since we started that, we have worked with 15 people. So as you can tell, our total number served here is 109. So when we're talking about the total number of people, of participants that we serve, this total number down here, that means that some, all of participants who have come in have completed our referral process, have met with case managers. And then again, you know, just realizing the fact that our numbers and our caseloads fluctuate over time, you know, based on where our participants are, how they're doing, moving, you know, within our program and working with our case managers. I also do also want to note the fact that pre-COVID, you know, our referrals were starting to pick up. We're doing really good. And then COVID hit. And then we had to put a pause and a stop to our referrals. So that I feel like that really had an impact on our numbers and our ability to continue getting those referrals and reaching out to people. But our team worked really hard and diligently to try to figure creative ways to continue supporting, engaging, and contacting our participants and making sure they were connected to resources in our communities. And so our partners really were vital in that process. Their collaboration with us was really important. It really helped them out too, our participants and our case managers. So although our referrals do come through these departments and these different partners, you know, we do really, in a sense, serve the entire valley and the whole community, just because as we get referrals, they could be someone who live over in Quinones County or San Luis. Or, and so we still serve essentially the entire valley within our program, not just within Alamosa. Although, you know, as we've started doing this work, as you can tell, we've expanded into different departments with our new departments coming on. And then with the work with the SLV MAP collaborative program. And then again, I mentioned our additional pathway that we've added, which is that community referral pathway. And that's in addition to our lead program that we do. And I like to put this up here too, just because this kind of gives everyone an idea of all the services, supports, and resources in our community that our case managers help connect all of our participants to. There's quite a bit. So you know, when we talk about not having a lot of resources in our valley, in a sense, we really do have a lot of them. It's just out making sure we're getting people connected to the right resources and supports. And so the case managers, they're, they work so hard. They're constantly out there working with our participants, working with our partners, making sure, you know, everybody's on the same page as far as what is needed barriers that they're facing when they're working with participants and that continued support. I think that's the one important thing with our case managers is oftentimes when we're working with our participants, our case managers may be the only supports that they do have at that time. And so they're working tirelessly to make sure that they're keeping them engaged and connected. And then also working on building their own natural supports. So over time, they can start having their own people in their lives that they can start working on, are working with, and reaching out to. And it's not always constantly just our case managers. And as you know, being a widespread community and our, you know, participants are spread all throughout the valley. Transportation is a unique challenge that we all face. I think, you know, we all across the board see this as a challenge. I think our partners have tried really hard to bring resources in to help with some of those barriers and challenges. But I think one of the unintended consequences we've noticed with our program is just some of the impacts that that's had with some of our participants with, you know, their driver's license and inability to get their driver's license and be able to have transportation independent of their, of theirselves and themselves and not have to depend on other people. And so I'm gonna move on to this next slide. And I'm actually gonna hand it over to Scott, our DA liaison, to talk about that.
Hi, everyone. So Carrie, touch on it a little bit. There's a few things that happens when you're serving rural area compared to the other urban counterparts that Lead exists in. Alamosa is actually one of the first rural areas to implement Lead. And because of that, we kind of had to adapt and do things differently. One of the things we did notice that was hampering our participants, probably more so than our participants in the city, is the lack of a driver's license. We live in a rural area where the resources can be scarce, but more importantly, sometimes resources are 15 miles away in Alamosa when our participants live all over the valley. From Center to Del Norte to Canales County, they're all over. So when they don't have a license or a reliable way of transportation, that really hampers their ability to get, get work in places that are outside of their own town, like in Alamosa, make appointments and make court dates. So that's something that our team is trying to track. We spoke to Lonnie, the person up at the, the Colorado State University, or Colorado University, doing our research. And we wanted to include something like this because it's kind of important. And we also wanted to take a look at why do people lose their license? Is it because of points? Is it poverty? Why are these people getting their license revoked? So if we can go to the next slide, Carrie? So this is just a quick look at our drive, the status of our Lead participants and their driver's license. This is as of March 31st, 2021. And I only include people, included people that were active in Lead and enrolled in the services. That way we can get a better look at what they kind of look like and stuff. And as you can see, over 50% of our participants don't have a valid license. 32% do, and 9% that can't find is actually because I couldn't find them in the database when I looked up their date of birth and their name and stuff. So I don't know how the database works, because that means that they've never applied for a license or they've never held one. But I simply couldn't find them. The next slide, I actually break it down a little bit more. So there's a few reasons people get their license revoked. There's a cancellation and denial. So that's when they commit something and the judge cancels their license, and then they have to go apply and get it reinstated by taking a driver's test, clearing all holes at the DMV and stuff like that. Then there's revocation. So their driving privilege was revoked. So they can't get a license anymore. And then there's suspension, which is pretty self-explanatory. Their license is simply suspended. And we look at this, we kind of see a few trends. We have 16% of them got their driver's license revoked. So that means they lost it because of DUIs, points, something that they're no longer allowed to drive. And so those 11 participants, it's kind of hard for us to help them in getting, obtaining their license and obtaining their driving privilege back. But we have a lot that we can actually help. 21% are canceled, denied. Only 18 of our participants, so that's 27%, actually have a valid license. We have three people that had are eligible for license, but they didn't go take the tests. And so I think this is just very interesting. Oftentimes, people get their license suspended for child support and inability to pay child support, or they didn't pay the child support. And that's, they'll lose their license for that. They'll lose it for points. They also lose it for not paying court fines and tickets. And with our participants, oftentimes, these court fines are extremely large compared to their monthly income, because a lot of them are below the poverty line. And that's less than a grand a month, but then they're charged with felony surcharge. That's $1,500. And an inability to pay it or an inability to set up a payment plan with the, the county collections department often leads to their license getting revoked. And then once that license revoked, it kind of hampers their ability to enter regular society, especially in a rural area where they're forced to drive, you know, 10, 15 minutes. It depends. If they're fortunate enough to live in Alamosa and are fortunate enough to access the resources and ride a bike or something like that, that's great. But if they're outside of Alamosa and trying to access these resources, it becomes really hard for our participants. So we've decided to try to look at this and help our participants any way we can, connecting them to the, the county collections department. So they set up the payment planner, their child support caseworker, and trying to get them up to date and current. And then also helping them understand why their license is suspended, what they need to do to get it reinstated and stuff like that. So it's something that wasn't talked about in any other Lead reports that I read in Seattle or Santa Fe. But to me, it's something extremely important, because from my personal experience, I live in Montavista and I have to drive to Alamosa every day. And while I could find a different job, that's kind of a hard thing, but that's a distance about 20 minutes, 20 miles. And if you didn't have a reliable source of transportation, it's kind of hard to get back into things and accept that job offer you got because you're scared you can't make it there every day. So it's something super important. And I think it's often overlooked. And it was definitely overlooked in all the other Lead reports. So it's something that we're gonna try to work on moving forward and try to track. Also, I think this is kind of goes without saying, but there's off, there's a lot of people that are similar to our Lead participants in the same below-the-poverty-line thing. And so this, the sample size we have that are as Lead participants is kind of indicative of a larger subset of the population. So I think it's a problem that's kind of affecting and it clogs up the courts because we have constant DURs. That was one of the first thing our new DA, Alonso Payne, mentioned was, he's like, hey, can you help, can diversion do something with these DURs? Because there's just too many. There's a lot that are in our court system. So I'm, I'm happy to see where this goes. And hopefully, we can make a difference and help some people get their license back. And hopefully, that makes a difference in their lives.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, so I know earlier I mentioned about the, our new community referral pathway. So I just wanted to make sure I'm making it clear. So with this new referral pathway, the National Support Bureau actually had created this after receiving feedback from the different programs that we were really missing a set of population of people who weren't necessarily having contact or having defined ways to have contact with law enforcement in order to receive these supports and services. So they decided to roll out a new leg of their program. And I know it's a little confusing because it's still Lead. So we have Lead, which is Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion, which is our traditional law enforcement pathway for our program. And then they added an additional Lead, which is let everyone advance with dignity. And so within that pathway, they're allowing communities to roll out a referral pathway for community partners. And so when we say community partners, that's really with like our, so our other health providers, Valleywide, SLV Health, our probation partners, behavioral health. So those are the, the community referrals we're referring to when we say community referrals. So it's really our community partner referral pathway. And we started taking these referrals and rolled this out for our program at the end of February. It's something we talked about as a team, as a group, and decided, you know, yes, this is something we want to be able to provide to our communities, because there was this gap in getting people enrolled into this type of services support. And so the criteria and screening questions that we developed for this pathway is very different from those that within our Lead referral, our traditional Lead referral pathway. And within the National Support Bureau, they did let me know that we were one of the first nations in the site to roll this out. So as we're rolling this out, we're giving feedback to our Lead National Support Bureau about how we've been able to bring this into our community and work with our partners and the community to make sure, you know, people are still getting services and supports that aren't necessarily having contact or consistent contact with law enforcement. So we have been working with our partners to make sure we're creating a smooth referral pathway for this, for each of their entities. And I see that because with our, with our referral process, you know, it was really tailored for our law enforcement partners. And it had the information we needed from our law enforcement partners to get the referral. And not everybody has that type of information. So we've had to do some tailoring of our referral forms. And again, our evaluation team is always so open to the feedback and helping us in any way that they can. So they've made some changes to that. And as we're working with our partners, the feedback that we receive from you, our partners, is really important. So that way, we are meeting the needs of our partners as well.
I have a question real quick. When you talk about partners with this new program that you rolled out in February, does that include schools?
So with our program, we serve 18 and over only. So we don't serve anyone under the age of 18.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the question. Another big part of our presentation, everybody loves to hear our success stories. And so I know these are big, long success stories. So we're not going to read this word for word. But I asked, so when is Holly, the first one? And the next one is Gail. So I just asked each of them just to kind of highlight what the main points of their stories are. But we'll leave it up for people who also would like to read them. Ms. Holly?
All right. So I've had the honor of working.
All right. So I've had the honor of working with a young man for the last two years. And yeah, he has just been so, he, he says that we are the reason that he made it through and that he's living successful and he's transitioned to Springs and Emperor or Springs and Fountain, I'm sorry. But um, yeah, he was so resilient and he just, yeah, he just needed, he had no natural support. So he just needed somebody to just kind of join him and kind of guide him through life and all the ups and downs and getting his driver's license, going through treatment, probation, UAs, all those things that he was able to do. And now he's living in Springs. He's got a job. He's, he's he's taking care of himself. He's doing all the things that, that, you know, that we take for granted. And he just like is every time something little would happen, he would just like a little kid so excited and he would just call me and be like, Holly, thank you, thank you, thank you. And he is reaching out and talking to me, even though he had moved away just because wants to let me know how good he's doing. So, yeah.
Thank you, Holly. Ms. Gail?
Okay, sorry. Hi, everyone. So I have the gentleman that I've been working with has been with this from the very beginning, one of our earliest, earliest referrals. And man, it's been a rough road for him. And I remember Christina, Daniel, and one of our first meetings when we first attended. You guys asked us what success looked like and what we wanted in some of our participants. And so this is a perfect example. He struggled with sobriety. He struggled with even trying to trust us. Trying to really imagine that there would be somebody there to understand and really meet them where they're at. And he, he called me out on it. And if you guys read my story, you know, he called me out on quite a few things and made some comments and you know, just because in his own head, he was thinking, this isn't for real. You know, this isn't what's going to happen. There's something around the corner that's going to come back and you know, I'm going to go ahead and do what I need to do. So, you know, they'll help me. And so that was what he was doing was surviving. Doing what he knew how to do for the past, you know, since he was 16 years old that he started using, you know, drugs. He was manipulating and trying to go around every which corner so that he could get his next fix and do what he had to do to survive. And so with time, we worked on different skills and even though there was times that I was frustrated with him because he didn't show up and you know, he didn't trust me and things. And so with time, it got better. We were able to get even though it was maybe what he would see as a failure. It was, we were able to pick out the strengths and for us to pick out those strengths and be able to come back. During this time, he lost his children, which was one of the worst things he said could happen to him and probably where I thought we would lose him for sure. And no, he was at the lowest part of his life and he still came back and said, okay, you guys say that you're going to be here for me. Help me. What do I do? And with that, we moved on. We kept on going. We kept consistent. We do the guerrilla case management. You know, there was times I couldn't find him and I would go to places you know, to find him and still not give up and tell him I still care. And you know, he wouldn't call me for weeks at a time. And then when he was at his lowest again, he would call and say, I need help, Gail. And I was there with no judgment to say, well, you know, the last time you've already missed three appointments. You're discharged. You're this, you're that. Nope, it was consistency. And at the end, this gentleman right now is almost one year sober. In the process, he has been able to make some, put some Band-Aids on a relationship with his sister and he sees his children on a weekly basis. He has maintained a job for over three months. He got his first paycheck. He, that didn't go to anything else but to help get him ahead, which didn't go to drugs. And he has maintained his job. He lives with his mother, helps his mother, helps his grandmother. And he is in treatment where at one time, if you'll read on the bottom of my success story, he talks about not being in a, in a place where he was receiving what he felt was needed and that's and he finally spoke up to say, I guess I just don't get anything from it, which is okay. Talk about it. So we were able to find him a different kind of treatment where it really dealt with a lot of physical treatment as well as the mental health piece, but it wasn't Medicaid eligible. So we were able to help with our lead funds to get him. And of course, we couldn't sustain it for so long. He was able to apply for a grant to help pay for the rest of his treatment. And he continues to this day to go to this treatment center. He does an outpatient. He attends three times a week. And his quote to me, you know, just a little bit of it is for a person like me that doesn't come often that people care. When I say that there are some people out there who care, this program was truly my inspiration and not to give up on humankind and especially on myself. When I say that this program helped me, please believe me when I say I am alive because this program believed in me. So that's my story.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
And if I could just say, thank you, City Council for bringing this program, the flexibility and the funds give us the ability to provide this kind of programming.
Yes, and the continued support from all of our partners as well. I think, you know, evidence has shown here that our participants truly do have a journey ahead of them. That's not a straight pathway and it curves and it dips and it, you know, it's not easy. And so our relationships with our case managers oftentimes are what help them really get over those humps. But again, knowing life happens and they may need that support again sometime in their life and to know that they can still reach out to our case managers at any time and know that they'll be there is really important for them. So thank you for sharing those stories. Another thing I like to do is also share what our partners in the community also have to say about our program. And so I shared some from different partners last time. This time I shared some from some of our community referral pathway partners. And then again, just understanding, you know, this really is given our community an option for something different. It gets given our law enforcement officers a resource for them to use when they're in the streets. And so for us, it's really been gratifying to see how much we've been able to expand and grow over time. And we couldn't have done this without the community support and our partners in the city. So thank you guys all for your time. And sorry, we talk so much. We're just passionate about what we do and we love, we love this work. So.
I don't know. Anderson had something to add.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Those are good stories. I love hearing them. My point, I'll just, I'll tell you guys, I mean, the, the program is crucial to what we do and what law enforcement is evolving to do to get results. If not, if we don't do anything else, clearly we're going to be doing the same thing we've always done, which is take people to jail and they get right out with no help. The program's seeing results. If you're looking at numbers, I wouldn't pay too close of attention to numbers. Numbers are one thing, but you want to look at quality versus quantity. Right? These guys are doing a great job. You know, they're, they're spending a lot of time with these individuals. They're putting a lot of attention to getting them help, which clearly we can't. You know, so I appreciate the work that they do and the you know, the, I guess, interest that they have in this, you know, they're professionals and doing a great job. You know, I think COVID kind of, kind of got us a little caught off guard. It slowed things down a lot. And I think we're starting to pick it up. I mean, obviously we're back in council face to face tonight. So that's a good thing. You know, and we've talked to Carrie and her crew and, you know, hopefully soon we can start meeting face to face. But you know, from our end, everything's looking good. I'm ready to go. These guys are doing a great job. You know, there's two aspects. Let's get these people help. Let's keep doing what we're doing. Law enforcement is going to keep doing what we're doing. You know, we're not going to stop. So, you know, I appreciate everything they do and that's all I got. So thanks.
Thank you all so very much. Appreciate all of the comments and the presentation as well. So council, they have some comments and we're going to go back to the live members first and then Zoom. We're going to go with Counselor V Hill, followed by Counselor Brawls, followed by Counselor Hensley, and then we'll go to the Zoom. Okay, Counselor V Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. And I have a lot to say, so please bear with me. But Carrie, you said that you are very passionate and your whole team is very passionate about all this stuff. Well, I want to be, I want to be your cheerleader. And I just keep, I keep thinking back to that, that CML session, that summer session. I think Mayor, you and I and Ms. Hensley and Ms. Daniel were at this rollout of lead and all four of us jumped on it right away. I think that was four or five summers ago already. And we took it to y'all, Heather, and you guys just ran with it and you put it in the right place and people have jumped on it. And we've always said from day one that it, it has to be like you just said, chief. You get after them, you get after the dealers. And if people are breaking the law, you get after them, but also help people if they're addicted because going through this whole process, jails, get them out, do it again, jail, it doesn't, it's not working. So I'm just, this is such a great program. And I just, I'm really, really happy to hear the success stories. Now I think we've been asking for those a little bit. And I know people might be a little bit like apprehensive to share that and it's very personal. But Holly and Gail, hearing those success stories are just phenomenal. And I just, some of the things you said, you know, no judgment, consistency, people care, don't give up on humankind. You know, that's what this is about. And I'm, it's just, it's just, it's just awesome. And, and you know, I, I hate to say this, well, and then I, you all know that I ran for county commissioner and there were some people when I brought up the lead program, how I think everybody in the valley should, should buy into this. Some folks said, well, it's, it's a waste of money. It, there's no success, you know? That's wrong. There is success down here and we got to keep this program going. And people need to buy into it and keep it going because it's helping people. And, and just for the record, that was not my opponent at the time. It was other folks. So just, just for the record on that. But it, this is great. Whatever we can do to keep helping you, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor V Hill. Ms. Brooks want to comment before we go to the other council members? Go ahead, Ms. Brooke.
And I, I know this was not part of the, the presentation. But at some point we can get statistics because we've been tracking, the DA's office has been tracking those who are actively engaged with their case manager, what their recidivism is compared to those who are not actively engaged. And there is a dramatic difference. And so it's not just about helping to heal these people and their families and their networks, but it's also to prevent future victims as well. And so for any naysayers, I think the numbers can speak for themselves as well as the, the testimonials to, to talk about the healing that's going on.
Thank you, Ms. Brooke. Okay, Counselor Brawls, followed by Counselor Hensley?
No, I can see the success of the lead program and I appreciate all those involved. I mean, it takes a lot of effort and a lot of counseling, a lot of patience. So I really appreciate it. I, I just have a curiosity question. What cities in the San Luis Valley or towns are we, are we including?
As far as
Carrie, did you want to talk about the cities we've been able to expand into?
Sure. So the new departments that have come on board, so the departments, I'll just list all of them. So right now we're working with Alamosa Police Department, Alamosa Sheriff's County Department. Motavista Police Department, Del Norte Police Department, Center Police Department. And so those are the departments that have actively been participating in making referrals to our program. And then, as I mentioned, also with the SLV MAT program, the collaborative with them, we've been working with them to support people through the MAT program. And then with this community referral pathway, we've expanded and been able to receive referrals from any of our partners in the San Luis Valley. And although those might be the only departments and partners that are making referrals, we receive people who live all over the San Luis Valley. And so there's people we, you know, see who live in. I know there was one in San Luis that Gail would have to travel to go see. And so they're all over. So essentially in a way, we do kind of serve the entire San Luis Valley.
And Counselor Broyles, the, the reason we didn't just plop it open to everyone is we had to grow it. So we had to start, make it strong, work out the processes and then figure out, okay, how do we go into Montevista and have the resources there to be able to do the intake? And then it's okay, then how do we expand into the center? And so it had to be stepwise. And then the point that Carrie makes as far as serving the whole community, because we get people from all over the valley that offend in Alamosa and sometimes then get referred because they're, the offense is happening here in Montevista.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor, thank you, Counselor Brawls, Counselor Hensley?
So one of the things that I think is awesome is this shows the success of collaboration. And that all of, I look at my Zoom monitor here and obviously looking at Chief and how many different entities had to get together to work together for this common cause. And that is awesome. And it shows that when that collaboration happens, the successes. One of the things that I'm really thrilled about, because I think I had asked this a couple of years ago, I can't remember, I lose track of time. But that idea that did have to go through obviously the police department to have that happen because there are some who need that help, but luckily, I guess, in one sense, didn't have, hadn't had that contact with the police. So it is really neat to see that it's expanded in that level too. And I guess my question, I do have a question is if somebody wanted to go with that second lead route, is there somebody they reach out to or how does that connection work to get it started?
So it's someone who they may be already working with. So with our partners, maybe, you know, a patient that they've been working with and they know they've been struggling and they just need some extra supports and they'll ask, you know, hey, we've got this resource for you and they'll introduce it and let them know about it and they're interested. You know, and they're wanting to participate in the program, then they'll reach out. We're trying to do warm handoffs with our community referral pathway because we know it's important for that engagement. So we're still trying to mimic that with our community referral pathway like we do with our law enforcement partners. Because that initial warm handoff from somebody who they may have been working with to somebody new is really important. So we're trying to make sure we're doing that with our community referrals. But so essentially to answer your question is it would be with someone who they may be already working with or are aware of and just needs the extra supports.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Now we'll go to our Zoom council members. We'll start with Counselor Daniel, followed by Counselor Grealish.
Ash, thank you, Mayor. So Counselor V Hill, I was not in the lead meeting. So I do believe it was just a couple of the other ones, but thank you for that because I got super excited when I heard about it, but I don't want to be given credit where it wasn't due at the beginning, but thank you.
Cancelled, Daniel, just go with it.
I appreciate. But I did want to say, I feel like I have such a unique opportunity because I'm on the policy committee with this wonderful and amazing team. And I also get to work with you in my job. And so, and I saw Gail and Holly like have tears and like, then I have tears. But the work that happens and the amount of intensity and just the the kind and loving support, I can't even say how the transition. So I've, I've had the fortune, I think, to have a participant that has been in SLV MAT that has worked with Tucasa, that has worked with me as their counselor and has worked with lead. And I have to tell you, all of us coming together to support this one person. So they have the thing that they need in order to be successful has been amazing. And when we think about where this person was six months ago, it's a, it's a dramatic difference and it's a dramatic difference because everyone's on the same page, her primary care provider, right? Like everyone is on the same page. And so I think the work that you all do to help keep our community safe and further the mission of public safety and support people who are struggling and being able to be there with them wherever they start. And I know that's a very hard concept. I think we talk about always meeting people where they are. But the, the truth is, is when you try to do that and you've never been where they are, that's harder than it sounds. And this team that you see in front of you, counsel, is so great at letting their, you know, guard down, letting their preconceptions go and just meeting people and being there to give them whatever they are, whatever they're needing. Carrie and Clarice and maybe some other team members are learning AccuDetox and different strategies for EMDR and trauma reduction and trying to figure out how to help with more diversion programs. Like this team is looking at how they can be a conduit to all of the other services and supports that these participants may need. And the fact that they can do that flawlessly and seamlessly with all the partners they work with, I can't tell you how amazing that is. And it's because of the leadership and it's because of the commitment. And I get to see it from both ends. I get to see it from this like And I get to see it from both ends. I get to see it from this like, yay, we get policy, we're having good outcomes, less recidivism. Thank you for having that happen. So we have a safer community. And I get to work with them and I know it really works. And so just thank you, team, and thank you for all of the work and the support that you you provide to our community.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Grealish.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of questions and then some comments. Carrie, you had on your referrals, you had two breakdowns, diversions and social. What is social?
Yes. So our social referrals are the referrals that our law enforcement officers were making if they don't have any. Charges that they could maybe withhold to get them enrolled into the program. They may just be somebody they know in the community, maybe they have constant. Frequent run ins with them or they're hanging out with the crowd that maybe they see could be potential down the road. And they'll just reach out and say, hey, I got this resource or they may be approached to and say, you know, I'm struggling. Is there a way that I can get in? And the officer at that time has a discussion to say that yes or no, that they'll make the referral.
Okay. And also you had a hundred and forty-two referrals and you served a hundred and nine. What's the difference in those numbers? Did some people drop out or or how did, what's the difference in those numbers?
So with our number, so the total number that I gave in the very beginning for the hundred and forty-two, that's all referrals regardless that we've received from. Our partners in law enforcement. And so the numbers served are the actual number of people who came back and engaged, completed our intake and worked with our our case managers.
Okay, good. I remember when this was a pilot program and. Through your partnerships and your hard work, we have gotten refunded, refunded. And I've always said that there should be an alternative out there. To jail instead of just jail itself, you know, and. The success stories that you guys come up with, that just it hits a heart, you know, because. There should be other, jail shouldn't be the answer. There should be other programs, even, you know, more than lead. And like to echo Counselor V Hill, whatever I personally, whatever the city can do to continue this program because it's successful. And I hope these other counties see the success and try to join in and and make it a whole valley success. You know, the, 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 the more we can do, we're there to stand up for for alternatives. And thank you all for all your hard work. And. I remember that there was only one or two and now to see all these people on the, on the Zoom and that's, that's a success. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Grealish. I don't see any other hands raised, so I'll go ahead and. Wrap things up in regards to comments. I I would like to applaud you all for the collaboration effort, the lead team and the Alamosa Police Department. It's, it's evident throughout our entire community. I want to thank you for meeting people where they are. Thank you for the success stories. And I just want to share a brief story with you all. It was probably a little bit over a month ago on a Friday night late. Right before I went to bed, I get a phone call and there was this mother who has a son who's participating in the program. She was crying over the phone, but she had tears of joy. She was crying and she was telling me how thankful. She is for the program that you all have and what you've done for her son. She said she had struggled for years to find him help. But now that he actually wants the help, it's good to know that he has a place in a community and people who actually care about him. So. The work that you're doing is important. Keep doing what you're doing because not only are you helping the participants, but you're helping their families as well. So keep up the great work, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, so we'll go on to the next item on the agenda. And that is business brought forward by the city staff, Parks and Rec, the first reading, reading of ordinance number six dash twenty twenty-one and ordinance approving. An intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa High School for the use of Lee Field.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you. This is pretty cool. So I was looking for you back there, but you're right there.
Well, first of all, that was a tough hack to follow. Really enjoyed that staff perspective. So anyway. Let's get moving here. All right, ordinance six dash twenty twenty-one. I'm pleased to bring this before you. It's an agreement between the high school and the city, kind of, kind of formalizing use of this softball. Programs, use of our Lee Field four. Counselor V Hill, you have the freedom to correct me on any of this history or dates and he will know it a little better than I. But basically, this is a program that that needs a home. It's a young varsity program. They started varsity games, I believe in two thousand eighteen. They've played some games at the, at the university field. They played some of their home games at our field. This agreement gives the program, the district, a little bit of stability. We see it as benefiting both parties because. The district is looking at possible improvements to the score booth, some storage for the team. And let's face it, these kids that are in the program now are the kids that were in our program. They have something to look up to. The agreement, it, it kind of is a boilerplate agreement that you would, you would see the district will pay for customary fees for light use for field prep. That kind of stuff. We'll make sure the scoreboard works in this or that and just kind of formalizes their use of the field, gives them a home. The district and the department have a strong history of collaboration and. We just see this as a continuation of that as a win, a little stability for the program. It doesn't interfere with our program's use the softball and. And other stuff. So. That was kind of quick, but I'm certainly here for questions. This is first reading. And thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you so very much, Andy. I see Counselor V Hill has his mic lit. Go ahead, Counselor V Hill.
Andy, that was a great. Intro, but like as Mr. Charlie says, I have a little bit of history.
Lot of history.
Lot of history. The varsity softball program is in its fifth or sixth year. It's in its fifth year. And I just want to gloat a little bit. My wife was the. The first head coach and and saw the program through the first four years. She started the program along with some parents at the time, five years ago, who were hungry for their daughters to get. Another sports program going. And. And they've played all their home games the last. For the first four years at the, at the college at Adam State. They were in a partnership with Durbin Taylor. And that worked out really well. This past season, they, Andy's right, they did have to use some of that. The softball fields over at the city of Alamosa. And that was good in that. So I think this is a great idea. It's going to help grow that program. I know my wife, along with the other coaches and that, and the people at the school have tried to work with. The city in trying to grow the program downwards and like the ponytail leagues, I think that's what they call it in that, the little, the little girls in that. So. A great opportunity for young women. I'm glad the city's stepping up to help with that. So I'm all for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor V Hill. Okay, so now I see a Zoom hand raised, Counselor Carson.
Um, I kind of see this as a no brainer. I was going to make a motion. As long as nobody else has any other comments, I was going to make a motion that we approve ordinance six dash twenty twenty-one on first reading approving an intergovernmental agreement. With Alamosa High School for use of Lee Field four.
Okay, Counselor Grealish.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second. And I wanted to make a comment. It's good to see this partnership working with the, the school district with. We did the group that was right before you, the partnerships here in the valley, for some reason, you know, the, they click. And they, they know, they do it for the, for the whole community. And to see stuff like this, it, it, you know, it's been a long, we've been waiting a long time and. I'd like Counselor V Hill says, I have some history and it, it, you know, and it, and to see this working. It is tremendous, Andy, and I'm compliments to you and your staff and all that. Keep the good work up. Thank you, my friend.
Thank you, Counselor Grealish. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. So as someone who came from always having softball, like I played. From the time that I was in T-ball and then I got to play fast pitch really young and all of those things. I was shocked that we didn't have a high school softball. Team and program in the valley. I was like, it was so hard when I, when I moved here. So it's so exciting to see that growth and development. So thank you, Andy, for working with the, the high schools and thank you, you know, Roxy for doing the coaching. But it is something that has made a huge impact in my life and made a huge impact in my growing up. And so I'm just really glad to see this continue for the young women in our community. So thanks.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you so much, Counselor Daniel. So we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Brawls?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Grealish?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that brings us down to the next item to. A public hearing and second reading of ordinance number four dash twenty twenty-one establishing a standard for culpable states for ordinance violations. I know exactly that goes to our city attorney, Mr. Suezar.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll just introduce this briefly and then you can open the public hearing. This is, I think, primarily a housekeeping ordinance. We do. We certainly would benefit from defining culpable mental states in our code because and by culpable mental states, I'm talking about the degree of intentionality. That's required for violation of certain ordinances. And our code requires varying degrees of intentionality depending on what, what the charge might be. So for instance, theft. Requires an intent to permanently deprive the owner of the item that you have stolen. Careless driving requires carelessness. That kind of thing. Going over the speed limit doesn't require any intentionality at all. You're over the speed limit you violated. It doesn't matter whether you intended to in any way, shape or form. So. This clarifies what those various mental culpable mental states are. And then it also adds a formal definition of what it means to. To, to create or to, to offend, to violate the code in a way that is an offense. And finally, it adds some clarity to how we treat affirmative defenses. For violations of the code. And the obvious one to think about is self-defense is an affirmative defense, for instance, to a charge of assault. So with that, what we've, what I, what we've done in terms of this ordinance is. Introduce provisions on those topics that mirror what the state criminal code has set up and just makes it more complete.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. So at this time, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. For the second reading of ordinance number four dash twenty twenty-one, establishing a standard for culpable mental states for ordinance violations. First, I will look out in the audience to see if we have anyone who would like to come up to the podium. No? So now I'll open it up to Zoom and Ms. Martinez, will you? Explain to people how they can raise their hand if they would like to participate in this hearing on Zoom?
Yeah, if you want to speak for public comment and are on the Zoom app, you can use the raise your hand button. And then it'll show me that you want to speak. If you're on the telephone to raise your hand, you'll dial star nine.
Ms. Martinez, do you see any hands raised at this particular time?
I do not, Mayor.
Okay, so. Being that I don't see any hands raised in Zoom and I don't see anyone in the audience who would like to come up to the podium, I am going to close the public hearing and bring it back to counsel, Counselor V Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number four dash twenty twenty-one.
Counselor Hensley?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? I don't see any mics lit and I don't see any hands raised in Zoom. Okay, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Brawls?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Grealish?
Yes.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, a motion authorizing the sponsorship of seventy-five hundred dollars to six entities. In varying amounts, detail in the council communication.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
As council knows, the last several years, we have split the year in half and taken applications all at one time for each half. That way we better know what entities are applying for sponsorship funds and can better delegate those, those funds. The sponsorship committee was a little bit new this time. It kept Counselor V Hill, but we have added Counselor Carson. We had six entities submit proposals. And since we did not award all the funds for the first half, there were funds that could be applied to the second half. And as expected. We did see more entities applying, anticipating the warmer weather, outdoor activities and vaccinations. I do want to note that previously council had awarded the Cinco de Mayo two thousand dollars. They had decided to delay their celebration until September. The committee felt that it was okay for them to keep that two thousand. So there, that's why they are not listed separately on this list. Of the seven thousand five hundred, so it's for SARS. Five hundred dollars plus use of the stage, Alamosa Roundup, it's recommended at two thousand five hundred plus use of the stage and tent. Splashland Triathlon, five hundred dollars. Splashland Kids Triathlon, which is an entirely different day, five hundred dollars. SLV Taste Fest, which is the Chamber Young Professionals, putting that on at, for Fourth of July. Is two thousand dollars and October Brew Fest, one thousand five hundred plus the use of the stage and use of the tent. At this point, we can answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. I see Mr. Brawls has his mic on. Oh, no? Okay, all right, no worries. Okay. I don't see, well, I see Counselor Grealish followed by Counselor Carson on Zoom.
Uh, good job. With doing this program. I didn't have any questions. I was going to make the motion that we prove the seventy-five hundred to the six entities.
Second.
Seconded.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussions? No? Okay, Ms. Martinez, will you please take the vote?
Yes, sir. Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Grealish?
Yes.
Counselor Brawls?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Okay, Counselor Daniel, go ahead.
Sorry, I hit the unmute button before I hit the hand button. Apologize. Thank you, Mayor. I did attend the Alamosa Housing Authority Board. Last week, there was, there's a couple of things happening there, truthfully. So there was a presentation regarding our housing study and I think that went very well. For the Housing Authority and they're excited about that. They are also looking at their bylaws and I know they've been reaching out to Eric and trying to figure out the ways to write this that they, they may be asking us not to. Appoint their boy, board in the future, but we will get to appoint this next, the next members that are due. Because we've already done one of the interviews and we're continuing with that process. So I know they're going to, to be looking at that. And so I, I wanted to prep everyone for that. Shift for them, although they did say they still liked having a city liaison to come to the meetings and that they appreciated the way that that communication has been going. And then they are also prepping their pilot money presentation. I told them they needed to go back to the, the emails that had been shared in. Talk through how they want to present that. So they'll be, they'll be reaching out with the information they have now that the housing study is complete. So really, you know, some very exciting, exciting things that are happening there. So thank you.
Thank you.
If I could ask a question of Counselor Daniels, Mayor, please.
Sure.
Why, why, uh, why are they wanting to make that move? Just curious, out of curiosity.
So they feel that they can. Pick, since it's the only connection that they feel they actually have with the city as far as governance goes, we don't have any other authority over what they do. They feel like they can have their own process to appoint their own commissioners. As far as governance goes, we don't have any other authority over what they do. They feel like they can have their own process to appoint their own commissioners. To the board and it, it's been a, it's been a question that some of them have had since I, I became liaison. And I'm assuming that it's been before that as well. Um, and I think that it's just, it was part of the process. And so every time a new board member gets appointed, they ask, why is the city doing this? And so it, it's been a, it's just been a conversation that they've been looking at. So I know it's been something that's been on their mind.
Makes sense. We're not necessarily experts in housing. I'm not anyway. So it makes sense. Thank you.
Um, and I also attended the homeless coalition, um, meeting last week as well. And they are moving forward quite, um, well with like pulling some gaps analysis. People need to go in and fill out their specific sheets, but we did a lot of updates last time. The winter response team is going to get back together, um, I, a subset of us next week. To talk through any like rapid, um, housing needs that may happen due to storms. And kind of really solidify the final plan for that for next winter, which feels good because it's summer right now. Um, had some good discussions about, uh, the, um, structures being put up at the campsite. Uh, talked about how the first campsite, um, cleanup went. So I know, and we all got that update. But really, some really good updates. We also had a housing, the housing presentation there, the housing survey presentation at that as well. Um, so really just some great information being shared, again, coming back to that collaboration. So we're not all at cross purposes, right? A lot of resources come to those meetings and then a lot of information gets shared. Um, so those are, that, that's going well.
Okay, ca- thank you, Counselor Daniel. I'm gonna allow, uh, couns- I mean, uh, Ms. Brooks to follow up on some comments for clarification. Uh, purposes, if you don't mind, Ms. Brooks, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I do plan to get with our city attorney in regards to researching the relationship. On the state statute between the housing authority and the city. I think as we're seeing through the development of the housing needs assessment and the plan, that. Creating more separation is the exact opposite of the direction we want to move in from a city perspective. And I can tell you, you know, as your city manager, my recommendation is that we continue that appointment. And in addition to that, build upon the relationship and the collaboration. Because, um, housing is critical and it, it's going to take all of us working together at a higher level than what we've been doing in the past. And so I will be connecting with the city attorney as well as the research that, um, Deacon and myself. And our housing consultant have been doing on the issue as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. I see our attorney, uh, has his hand raised as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I just wanted to say that I did talk with the housing authority briefly and took a very brief look at the statute. And my recollection, without looking it up again now, is that the statute that establishes the housing authority. Also establishes that city council appoints the board members to the authority. And, and I mean, there, there are various workarounds, you know, you could make a practice of rubber stamping a slate that they submit. But that's my recollection. And obviously, if this is an issue they'll want to pursue, I'll, I'll come up with a definitive answer.
Yes, and thank you, Eric. So that was my recollection for the last three times we discussed it. And, um, and every time we've looked at the statute, however, they had a different belief this time. And so I told them to come back to you. So I'm glad that you and the city manager will be working through that. I did, I mean, I said in the meeting, I personally don't have a vested interest in, in that piece, right? Like, that's not my role there. But it really is important, if it is in state statute, that we have that responsibility that, A, we take it seriously and, and learn about who we need to. Put on that board, right? Um, and then B, that they understand that it is part of what we are required, obligated, have the responsibility for. Um, and just continuing to work with them on a close, close basis. So thank you for saying that about the statute. I brought that up and they said, no. So, um, I, I think the, the conversation will be had well. Um, so I'm excited that. So you, we may want to consider, I don't know, um, but having another presentation from the city at the next meeting. If that will be allowed by the, um, by the, by the board.
Okay, and thank you, uh, Mr. Suezal and, uh, Ms. Brooks for clarification to. I, I think when we have to deal with misinformation, we have to address it head on so that it doesn't spread throughout our community. And I think the way we move forward, we have to do it just like we're doing right now. So thank you for that. Okay, I see a couple hands raised in the Zoom. Um, I think Counselor Carson was first, then Counselor Grego. I think, or maybe the other way, so. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. Counselor Carson, are you, do you have your hand up or no?
Yeah.
I do, but Charlie wanted to speak first, he said.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I just wanted to speak to, uh, on the homeless coalition, uh, Counselor Daniels. I missed two, the first one, I, I didn't know how to get on it. And since then, uh, Heather sent me the minutes and how to get on it. The second one, I had something come up. I will be there, the third one. And then I don't know if, if you guys are still meeting Zoom or in person. I don't know how, is it still in Zoom?
Uh, we need to assess when we get closer to the meeting. Um, hybrid was not working very well. So we, we decide we want to commit to one way or the other.
Okay, but I, I promise I'll be there. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, you know, I, like I said, the first time I didn't know how to get on there, so. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Counselor Carson?
Um, I just wanted to address, uh, Heather's comments about the, the housing authority. I, I appreciate you saying that. I, I have no clue about housing myself, like, as, as, except for what I've read from the housing study that they did now. It was kind of my first, um, introduction into it. Uh, so I, I appreciate you clarifying that, uh. And I guess you, you know, you'll have our support in what we decide to follow there. Uh, secondly, I hate to, to be a killjoy on, on as far as the homeless coalition. But I caught, uh, I got stopped a couple of times and asked about, uh, the cleanup. Uh, people knew that, you know, I had been involved in it at, at the beginning as far as the campsite goes. And as directly involved, because I was very vocal about that. But they were really upset that we got to the point where we're cleaning the campsite. So I just wanted to, to, you know, put that out there. I got some pretty hard comments. People got, uh, pretty real with me about it. Um, and they were very upset that as a city, we were funding any sort of cleanup. They, they thought that we should, uh, kind of incorporate. Some of the people that are staying there as far as help. I told them that I thought we were. Um, but yeah, they were pretty, they were, they weren't overly, you know, excited about the, the whole camp in, in general. So I know these people were upset about the idea. So I'm putting that out there. But the idea, you know, I think the cleanup was something that pushed them over the edge. And so they approached me and were pretty upset about it. So I just wanted to put that out there. Um, we did have some community members that were upset about the, the fact that we were wasting, spending. They said wasting, but we'd spending city resources, cleaning up the camp after we had already provided the camp. So I had, uh, I gave my word to these people that I would talk about that in this meeting and bring it up. So, uh, you know, as, as far as these constituents go, they would appreciate it if the people at the camp. And the residents who were at the camp were also employed in or used to help clean that camp up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Uh, Ms. Brooks?
Uh, Counselor Daniels, I would be interested. I know I'm not on the coalition anymore, but I would be interested in helping or volunteering for the winter response team. Uh, you know, I, I would love to be there and help with that. So if you guys need anything, let me know.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Carson. Ms. Brooks, uh, would like to respond?
Thank you, Mayor. This is another area where there seems to be a lot of misunderstanding in the community, um, surrounding this. So the city, um, was receiving complaints about the condition of what the campsite looked like. And by our own opinion, um, when people have left, they've left some of their stuff there. Um, we've also had community dumping that was going on. And, and it was not clean to the standards that the people using it, nor us or the community would want. And so what we're left with is, okay, we have a situation. We don't want to just leave it. We're not going to pay somebody, we're not going to use city resources to pay a company to go in there and clean it. And at the same time, we had groups of volunteers who wanted to go and do volunteer cleanup. So what we did was connect those dots and, and coordinate on a monthly basis. To try to make it very easy for volunteers to plan on. So if you miss one month, you know, you can pick it up the next month. Um, we do have a community service officer out there to ensure from a legal liability perspective. That the volunteers are signing off on the form. Um, and, and that's essentially it from a city perspective. We do bring a dropout, um, large, large dumpster, um, a roll-off, I guess it's called. Um, but beyond that, it was volunteer effort. Now, I myself was out there. We had some elected officials, both from the county and the city. There was board members from La Puente. There was a lot of La Puente staff. There was members from the homeless campsite, the St. Benedict's campsite. Um, out there. And then there were just general volunteers. And so, um, you know, I think people like to complain. And not think through what the solution needs to be. Um, and it's unfortunate. And so it's, it's a, it's a monthly thing. It's to keep it clean. And the other consideration is the three people that are out there right now had nothing to do. With the mess in the other campsites. And so in a way, it would be as if my neighbor's yard is trashed out and creating a nuisance. And suddenly the city's expecting me to go clean up my neighbor's yard. So, uh, you know, I think a little sensitivity and providing the accurate information to the people in the community. So we did not want to leave it as a mess, which it was. Um, we wanted to offer the opportunity to volunteers. And we were not paying to have a company go out there and clean it. And so that's, that's what the situation is.
Once again, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Heather. I appreciate that. I, I did, you know, say that I would bring it up. So thank you for that message. And, uh, I don't know how clear the messaging was about that. I did read about it before it happened. And when I read about it, it, the messaging I read somewhat sounded like there was resources being used from a, a public level. But in the future, I would suggest that that's somewhat conveyed, you know, even if it's, if it's a monthly thing, maybe something in the paper, something to, to. Make people more aware of what's really going on. Cause I appreciate you clarifying that. Thank you.
And just, uh, you know, for an additional little tidbit, when we are contacted by other community groups who are doing cleanups, we provide dumpsters. Now, they're smaller dumpsters because those cleanups usually don't result in the, the type of debris that we had out there. Um, but i- it is the same type of service we provide to other community groups when they're doing cleanups.
I, I guess one quick question I forgot to ask was, did we, did we come to a, a, a solution about cameras out there? Yeah, I don't remember.
We have one camera out there that can capture the area around the facilities that the city has offered. Um, it doesn't capture the entire camp. So we're seeing how useful that one camera is. Which has proven useful with the arson situation. Um, but if there is a growing need for it to cover the rest of it. Then we would have to look at some installation of additional cameras. At this point, we haven't really seen a need for that.
Thank you.
And thank you once again, Ms. Brooks, for, uh, clarifying, um, misinformation that spread by a few people. That spreads throughout the community. Thanks again for addressing that because, uh, we, as council member, receive those phone calls. Um, and once again, we have to address them head on. And I think the way you're approaching it is a good way, uh, to do that. As well. So, um, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, if there are no other, oh, Counselor Grego, I'm sorry, I see you. Go ahead, Counselor Grego.
Can you see my hand now?
Now I see it.
Okay, thank you.
Motion.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to make a couple of comments on that homeless cleanup too, you know. I was one of the ones that people called and said there was getting bad out there. So when Mrs. Brooks told me, well, we're gonna organize a cleanup, I said, well, I'm volunteering. And the people that were out there, that were volunteering it, they were, I, I was happy to see there was a lot and they were, everybody was working together. And like, like she said, uh, the various groups, a lot of people had masks, so I didn't know who, who they were. But, uh, they all worked together and they got it cleaned up. And, and, uh, it did become, I think, uh, somebody would just go in there and dump, uh, couches and stuff out there, you know. It became the dump, dumping site. But so I'm glad that, that now the communication that's out there, that it's not a dumping site. So we're gonna be monitoring that, I hope so. So I just, just that clarification. And I, if I have a chance next time, next Friday, I'll be there also. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Grego. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised by anyone. So we'll go ahead on, move on down to staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, some of this is just to repeat a little bit what's already been said tonight. But as a reminder, next Wednesday, May twelfth, is our police memorial ceremony. It is at five thirty. At its regular location in front of the police department. Following that, we do have a work session at six thirty. And that is going to be our first opportunity to review what we think about the, um, American Rescue Plan. That's the federal funding. The, um, treasury still has not released guidance. Um, but we can talk about how much we think we might get, what we think are some categories and some potential uses. And for council to provide some input there. So it's a, in my opinion, a fairly important work session. Following the very important memorial. Um, I also was just gonna share that our next volunteer cleanup. For the homeless campsite, St. Benedict's, is Friday, May twenty first at two o'clock. Um, and I do plan on being there. So maybe I'll see some of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Okay, that brings us on down to, uh, council comments. Um, I see Counselor Hensley has her mic lit. Um, so if you all would, uh, since we're almost at the end. Either raise your hand so I can make sure I see them up or like push a button or something. And I'll make sure we recognize you. We're gonna start here with, uh, Counselor Hensley.
Okay, so I'm gonna bring up sort of my opinion and sort of get feedback. So I know when we're trying to do our retreats, both the winter and the summer retreat, it has become fairly painful. To try to find a date. And I, my thought is, is similar to how we know on city council. That we keep our Wednesdays open. And I know like when I'm on CML, that I know in the executive board, uh, retreat is in July. We know when CML, obviously pre-COVID, but we would have things set up as far as when the CML conference is, things like that. So my suggestion would be, is that we pick a date for next year, both winter and summer. And that that stays fairly consistent. And that way then, as people run for office, they know this is, similar to a Wednesday. This is the weekend they need to have available for the retreat. And obviously, life happens, um. Deaths, marriages, weddings, things like that. I mean, if something happens, it happens. But that as a rule, we all know that is something that we are committing to. Um, because what happens and I, it, it is when it starts being planned now. It's tough because we, we definitely have made different plans and arrangements. So anyway, I just wanted to throw it out there, that idea of. Starting to look ahead already and let's start picking potentially, or my suggestion is picking a date, that this becomes our retreat date. Both in the winter, whatever was decided, and then also for the summer.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Counselor Hensley. I didn't know if anybody want to make any comment on that right now, or it's just Ms. Brooks?
Uh, and just to clarify, I don't think Counselor Hensley intends for us to discuss the calendar tonight. I can send out like doodle polls or, you know, something like that. But it's more of the concept of, does council agree? That we should try to set the next summer and the next winter and kind of have it be, this is the weekend.
And I just add one more thing, and I think it does help staff as well, because as they're planning their life for the years and stuff. They also, the ones that come to the retreat also can have it on their calendar. So I just think it helps staff something fairly set. But yes, we don't need to, to pick it out today.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Hensley. I think that's a good idea and I reckon, we'll, we'll talk more about it. Thank you. Okay, um, I don't see any mics lit, so I'm gonna move on to Zoom. Council members. Um, I see, uh, Counselor Daniel, Counselor Grego, and then Counselor Carson.
And I apologize, Mayor. I, I don't know if the hands are raised away in on what Counselor Hensley said. Or I guess I would just like a little bit of direction on if anyone thinks that's not a good idea. Cause otherwise I won't send out a doodle poll type of thing.
Okay, that's fine. You want to consensus as an idea. So, um, what I'm gonna do now is since Ms. Brooks, just want to get some little feedback. Um, let's start off with the live council members first and then we'll go to the Zoom council members. I, I think it's a good idea myself. Okay, Counselor, uh, V Hill raised his hand, yes. Uh, Counselor Brawls? Okay, um, Ms. Counselor Hensley made a recommendation that we, you know, make an advance notice, um, on this count. So, do you agree with it or what? Okay, so, good. All right, so we're gonna go to. All right, so we're gonna go to Counselor Daniel for all about Counselor Grego, then Counselor Carson, just to get your feedback on that one uh question.
I, I, so I agree with it. Um, I think it could be on the doodle polls, instead of picking dates, be like every third week of, weekend of January, we, you know, like it's the second, third, fourth week of January or March, or whenever we do it. I'm sorry, my dog's freaking out. Or, and then like in July or August or whatever, is it always the first, second, third, fourth weekend? So that way, we can just plan for that weekend, that Friday, Saturday, multiple years in a row um versus dates. Because I think that gives us a little bit more um consistency.
And I wasn't planning, I wasn't planning dates, I was planning exactly what you said.
Perfect.
Sounds good. Counselor Grego?
Uh, I totally agree. And it, it used to be that way. This month, we, then it started changing. I think this time we went to three or four different changes. You know, it's crazy, you know, and it's, it's something I think that's so important, these retreats. You know, years ago, we used to plan the budget during that period of time. And now it's changed different ways, which is fine. But I think that, uh, that was Counselor uh Liz said that, you know, there's certain things you gotta do when you're a counselor that you should commit to. And if you know that you're gonna run for council and you gotta do this, that, if you can't do it with them, maybe that's not your choice. So I agree that we should set the dates on it.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Carson?
I'm fine.
Okay, you're fine with it? Okay. All right, so, sounds like a plan. Thank you, Counselor Hensley for bringing that up. Okay, so, I see hands still raised for additional comments. So I'll go in that same order again that I see on the screen. Uh, Counselor Daniel, Counselor Grego, Counselor Carson.
So I just really wanted to say thank you to council for all the positive comments about Mental Health Month. Um, it, it means a lot that we are talking about these things as a community, so thank you. I also wanted to let everyone know that Flat Layla made it back to Albuquerque and she got to do her report. So thank you for letting me take the picture of her at our last council meeting. Um, and then really wanted to say, it was in our consent calendar, but I'm pretty excited that we agreed to send uh Counselor Hensley um, an endorsement letter to serve on the CML executive board again. I think she's represented us well there. And I just wanted to say, I'm looking forward to, to her continuing that. Um, I think that will be great. Um, and then May is full of exciting things. So it's also Nurses Week this month, as well as Women's Health Week this month. So in addition to all of the proclamations we made, that there's a lot of things to celebrate during May. So just thank you, council, for everything and really wanted to say good luck to Liz and all of that. I thought that was fun to, to see again.
Can I, I'm just gonna, if you're okay, I'm gonna add something just to that comment. So I appreciate the support. I will say, if you want to talk to people about voting, I will have a lot of competition this time. So, just thought I'd point that out. So it's not a shoo-in by any means, and I will have a bit of competition.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Hensley. Okay, now we're gonna go uh to Counselor Grego, follow up Counselor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. To begin, I want to wish everybody a happy Cinco de Mayo day. Today uh is a big day for Hispanics, so happy Cinco de Mayo. And also, uh, this council meeting, when we have all this good news and partnerships and success story, you know, all that this council does, it, it's just makes uh, in the heart, it makes it feel good, you know, that that stuff like this is going on and, and we're participating in it and we're helping the community, helping a lot of different people. So it's good to, you know, there's, there's some stuff out there that still uh gets to the core of the body as uh Counselor Carson would put it. But uh, we do a lot of good things, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Um, Counselor Carson?
Um, I just wanted to bring up a, a kind of a dead horse a little bit. Um, had people uh approached me again the last couple of weeks uh in regards to streetlights. Uh, they came and said, they were kind of upset that streetlights had been put directly east of the locations they've been wanting and asking for um to cover businesses that were newly opened. And I, I didn't have a direct answer for them. I said, I, I'm assuming these people probably privately paid. I don't, I, I don't know if I was putting my foot in my mouth, but um, they kind of cornered me. And so I wanted to bring that up again. I have heard zero about it, really. Um, and I don't, I, I think at this point, a couple of years down the road, I don't think it should be that big of, of an issue. So I would really like you guys to, to move on that and try to figure something out there. Uh, because it's pretty bad for us to have been asked about it for two years. And then for these people, whether it was private or, or Excel that put them out, to see streetlights right behind of the locations they've been asking for a couple of years. So I would appreciate to hear some kind of movement on that, guys. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Carson. I believe, uh, Ms. Brooks would like to reply?
So it's a two-part answer. The first one is, I'm not sure what streetlight installation they'd be talking about. So if you could have them contact the Public Works Department to have a, a direct conversation there. Um, there's not been something, to my knowledge, and Harry is shaking his head, of us putting an order in. In regards to the bigger issue, we are gonna bring before the entire council a discussion on streetlights as a whole, evaluating the entire community and where we think there might be some gaps. Because piecemealing it is gonna be a slippery slope. And there are some areas that people may think they need them and they don't. And there may be other areas that, that people, you know, maybe haven't said anything and, and there's some darkness. And so we've gotten the, I, I think most of the information from Excel. Staff has also driven around and evaluated the length between some of the streetlights and where there could be potential dark zones. So it can be a little bit more objective. Um, and then council can provide direction, knowing what the cost is going to be as well. And I think that might be the last piece we're waiting on from Excel is because some of the streetlights can be attached to poles that are existing, so the cost is, is lower other than the ongoing expense of electricity, whereas some might require a pole. And so we're waiting on that cost breakdown for Excel. And so we are actively working on it. It's just most appropriate to come back to council to weigh in on it instead of one or two streetlights here or there. But in regards to expectations of streetlights being put in and them being put in at a different location, uh, they really do need to call Public Works because we're at a loss of what they might be talking about.
Um, I appreciate your answer, Heather, and, and I really do appreciate you as a city manager. You're awesome and you're very, you're, you're very thorough. But I, I don't really, really like your answer because to me, I had a constituent approaching about 14th Street and the answer you gave her was exactly that same kind of answer. It was a very technical answer that didn't really answer the question. And the thing is, is at this point, these people have asked us for two years now, and to pass them off and say that we're gonna make, you know, go through this other whole process of evaluating the entire city to get them a couple of streetlights when the week, the week that we asked, I mean, the year that we asked, there was really an obnoxious streetlight put up in front of my house. They ran a power line from the backyard and made it really obvious that there was a streetlight put out here. And it was pretty much nothing of what we asked for. And, and so again, I looked like a jerk. And these people, again, have not gotten what they've been asking for, for not two years, but 20, 25 years and, and, and according to some of these residents. And so I really am kind of disappointed in that answer. And I don't really think that we need to bring it back to council to put in a couple of streetlights. So I would really appreciate it if you guys would evaluate this a little, a little better in this particular scenario. And then maybe as a whole, then you guys do the whole evaluation of the city. Because these people, as, as you know, as a small group, have approached us now for a while. And so I really am not trying to be jerky, but this is one of those times I can't accept the technical answer. And, and I know that maybe that you don't, you don't appreciate that, but I, I really appreciate us looking into this particular situation a little bit differently. So thank you.
Uh, I appreciate that, but we will be bringing it before council. And I didn't give a technical answer on the 14th Street. I provided the backgrounds and the documentation of what was promised to the community on what would be done in the Street Trust Fund.
I remember I was at that meeting when that customer, when that constituent asked you. And again, I, I, I appreciate the answer, but it isn't the answer that these people are looking for. They don't want to wait five years for the city to do a streetlight evaluation to get two streetlights next to a daycare.
It, we're not talking five years. We're talking like a month or two, is what we're talking about.
Well, in their timeline, it's been a couple decades, Heather. I'm sorry, and I'm not trying to argue with you or be difficult. But the fact is, is I've been approached personally by these people now going on probably eight times.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Counselor Carson. Thank you, Ms. Brooks, for your response as well. Okay, I don't see um any other hands raised uh in the Zoom. I don't see any lights lit here. So I'll just go ahead and wrap up our meeting. Um, I would like to applaud our IT team, along with the city clerk and her team and city staff for making this first hybrid council chambers Zoom uh meeting possible tonight. Uh, I think everything went really well, uh, considering it being our first time, and you all deserve a round of applause. Okay, I don't see anything lit up, so since we don't, this meeting is officially adjourned. You don't get to do this uh on Zoom.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Take care.
Mayor, was Counselor V Hill wearing a tie?
Um, I don't see a tie, but he sure was wearing his mask the whole meeting.